Roll call for the City Council Meeting of Wednesday, September 5th, 2018 at 9:00 a.m. Mrs. Arrington, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Ms. Demersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, please rise for a moment of silent meditation and Pledge of Allegiance.
In our moment of silent meditation, please keep the Horton family in your thoughts and prayers on the loss of their loved one.
Madam President?
I'd like us all to remember Senator John McCain, a gentleman that proved he was a true American hero, no matter what side of the political fence we may come from. He represents to my generation, fellow veterans, a man who walked a walk and talked a talk. And I wish we could all aspire as elected officials to at least be willing to listen to the other side of the aisle. So, please remember him in your prayers.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes from the City Council Meeting of Wednesday, August 8th, 2018, and bills for payment on August 31st and September 7th, 2018. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Ms. Demersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington.
That takes us into repository sales. Are there, is there anyone here from repository sales? Please state your name and address, please.
Aaron Jarmalowicz, 2320 Deer Run Trail.
Could you say it to the mic, please, sir?
Aaron Jarmalowicz, 2320 Deer Run Trail.
Okay, state that, what's the property?
Uh, there, I actually purchased seven lots on the corner of 16th and Franklin. But the letter that I got from the community development, there was only two lots on there, 302 and 303. So, I guess I gotta call Steve down at the tax claim to see why the other lots weren't included in there.
Okay, and what will you be doing with these lots?
Uh, I own Erie Weld Products on the corner, on the east side of the bridge. So, I own the property on the others, on the west side as well. So, this is just taking control of it, so if I need it in the future, or whatever. So, I don't have any plans for it right now, just to get control of the property and maintain it.
Are there any questions?
Madam President? Are there any buildings on the property now, or is it just vacant lots?
It's just vacant lots, yeah.
And is it, are you taking care of the property now, or is it just in bide?
Yeah, no, I've been taking care of it all year.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for having your business over there.
Thank you for your business. I drive past there a lot, on Franklin Bridge. You have the spiral staircase going up.
Yeah, right, I bought all those.
Thank you for giving us business in Erie, Pennsylvania.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
This is for repository sales. We didn't, that's okay. Is there anyone else here for repository sales? Is there anyone else for repository sales? Last call for repository sales. That takes us into citizens to be heard.
I'm David French. I live at 310 West 20th. I'll make this brief. I have here is EMTA bus passes, something that I don't leave home without. It's a valuable asset to me. But what concerns me is when I try to get to a bus stop, quite frankly, there's sometimes there's people sitting there drinking some alcoholic beverages, just not being, they're not looking to get on the bus, they're looking for a place to sit and have their beverages. And I think we ought to revisit the open container law, especially in places where senior citizens may want to sit and wait for their bus. I've seen women harassed by these people. It got to the point where I actually went down to the police department and reported an incident. They responded within minutes. I think it was kudos to them for doing that, but we shouldn't have to be invaded by these people that have, maybe have no place else to go to drink. I don't think these shelters were designed for that. It's very uncomfortable for me. I saw two women harassed, both, they were enticed to come and have a drink, there was racist comments made, and I thought it was totally wrong. And that's why I took the step to go down to the police department, and they gave me some assistance. But this is happening ongoing from 18th Street down to Hammond Hospital, time and time again, all year round, and I think we should take a look at this. Thank you so much.
Good morning, folks. Adam Trot, 531 West 6th Street, Floor 2. Before I touch base on what I came here for today, I do want to corroborate that Erie Weld Products is a really good company, employing people in Erie and making good products. The bus stop at 18th and State, the green bus shelter that was just installed this summer, Erie Weld was a critical partner in making that happen. So, I'm in great support of things that Aaron does. I'm here this morning to follow up with the email I sent last week about the Environmental Justice Advisory Board. I don't know if you fully comprehend what action is taking place in Harrisburg, and I think it's important to understand the full breadth of it. The environmental, the Office of Environmental Justice is part of the Pennsylvania DEP, and they exist to ensure that Pennsylvanians at risk from pollution and other environmental impacts have a voice in decision-making processes. The Advisory Board is comprised of 15 individuals appointed by the Secretary of the DEP with personal and professional expertise in environmental justice issues, and they meet quarterly to advise on how the DEP is protecting people's access to decision-making processes. Now, as you may note in the email that I sent on August 29th, the Environmental Justice Advisory Board is having the Office of Environmental Justice rewrite their public engagement process. And they have a draft out dated June 13th, and they're enhancing that draft now. But in the meeting minutes that I sent you, dated June 13th, of the Environmental Justice Advisory Board, they mentioned specifically that they are concerned with getting right the environmental rights amendment and a clearly defined difference between public hearings and public meetings, and clarification regarding recorded testimony at public meetings and its relationship with comment-response documents. That is practically word for word what we pointed out went wrong with the Viaduct process. And I have to tell you, I have great admiration for the state recognizing that there's a problem and not hiding behind the curtain, saying, "Well, it's in litigation, so we won't do anything until after litigation." No, they actually have the level of caring to say, "This is a problem, it's active now, regardless of the litigation, we're proceeding to fix this problem." And I'm just simply asking, that City Hall exercise the same level of caring to correct an ongoing problem? The easiest way to address this is to just say, "To heck with it, let's have the darned public hearing that we didn't have." In the draft of their public engagement policy that they're rewriting, they have sections that specifically define a public meeting versus a public hearing. And even with the draft that was out on June 13th, they still said, "It's not enough. We have to better distinguish between the two." So, please, I implore you, read at least those sections and understand the issue that we have been advocating for, for over five years now, and let's fix what happened over on East Avenue. I don't know what else to say, other than, I just hope you can take another look and think about the impacts of that, and follow the state's example. Okay, thank you.
My name is Stephen Gleason. I live at 1262 West 9th Street, here in Erie. And I don't generally make public statements, but the situation with the Viaduct is an exception. Some individuals in City Hall are saying it's too late to save the Viaduct. It's just not true. You can use it, you can use your vote to help save it, and I would appreciate it if you did. There's three reasons to change your mind and save the Viaduct. One, PennDOT is already ready to spend $1.26 million to save the Viaduct. Volunteers are standing by to help raise the difference to save this bridge. Saving the Viaduct can create jobs, spur private investment, help grow the city's economy and its tax base. If the Viaduct is demolished, East Siders without cars, including schoolchildren, will be forced to walk along the four-lane Route 290 connector and cross a dangerous intersection. I know, because I've stood there and watched it. I would hate to have to walk to work along that fast-moving highway. Although the speed limit is 35 miles an hour, the average speed of the traffic is 55 to 65. I know because I've driven it many times. I almost got ran over. Like many of you, I'm a parent and a grandparent, and I wouldn't want my family, my children, to have to walk along a busy highway to get to school. I wouldn't want my mother to have to walk next to tractor-trailers to get to a grocery store or to her church. Are we really the kind of city that's going to endanger our children and elders? You, our City Council, and staff at City Hall, and every one of you sitting here today would not want your children, your grandchildren, or your parents to walk along that highway. President Arrington, Member Allen, Member Schaff, I thank you for your past support of the Viaduct, but your help was still needed. In fact, all of you need to help. I'm inviting everyone here today to have some fun and support the Viaduct by attending the Bridge of the Gap fundraiser this Friday, September 7th, at 6:00 p.m. This benefit will be held at the beautiful Sunset Inn with professionally-prepared food, beverages, and light entertainment. Julie Von Vulcanberg in St. Stephen will start the night off. During the evening, both the Bill Cotter Band and the Legend Band will perform, as will poet C. Williams and the local DJ, Barry "The Mailman" Clark. Over two dozen Viaduct-themed baskets will be raffled off at 9:00 p.m. Tickets are $25 at the door, or just $20 in advance, and you can purchase them at Copy King, Erie Art Gallery, Gary's Flower Shop, Paca, and Uframa. I challenge all council members to walk the highway with me and with their children or grandchildren, on a weekday, whichever day is convenient for you. Then hopefully you will believe no one should have to walk along a busy highway to get to where they need to go. I implore you to save the McVie Viaduct, and you can learn more at www.earyviaduct.com. Thank you very much.
My name's Sean Lilly. Oh, I just wanted to talk about a few things I kept noticing when I was walking around. Like, it seemed like everybody doesn't really, like he was saying.
Your address, sir?
I don't have an address. But people were saying, or people like, "I'm trying to cross the street, and people ain't even like, I'm in the crosswalk, the light's barely red." You know, like, the car's far away, like, I'm already crossing in the crosswalk, it's not like they're right here. They're not even slowing down, like, they're pushing the gas pedal instead of like, the brake, or letting off the gas pedal. It's like they're speeding up when I'm in the crosswalk. I see that all over the town, Parade Street, Harbor Creek, Mill Creek, Stage Street, like, nobody even, like, they're telling us we need to get out of the street all the time, and like, they're almost really trying to hit us, like, they're hitting the gas pedal while we're in the street, like, really trying to. Oh, and another thing I kept noticing is, like, Gannon Security and, like, Erie Insurance Security, like, they're riding around, like, they're, the Erie Police Department, like, patrolling and stopping, and like, like, they're trying to arrest people or something, like, they're securing the whole town or something. It's like, they're supposed to be for the school or the Erie Insurance, they're acting like they're patrolling, like, they're patrolling for the EPD or something. It's like they're stopping people and talking to them, it's like, that isn't even their job. Their job is to protect the campus grounds or the Erie Insurance property, like, they're driving around like they're patrolmen, like, stopping and talking to people, or like, threatening people to, like, get away from, not even Gannon property or Erie Insurance property. You know, like, they're talking to people, they're even around the property, they're supposed to be blocking people away from the property or the area that they're patrolling. Like, their patrol area is way, way away from Gannon and Erie Insurance Arena, it has nothing to do with their job. Like, they're supposed to just be for Gannon or Erie Insurance, they're in their, they're in Erie Insurance vehicles, Gannon vehicles, and like, they're acting like they're the EPD or something. And then, like, the EPD, some of them are like, stopping me, like, saying, I'm, like, acting like I'm doing something, I'm sitting on the sidewalk, I'm homeless, I'm, like, I'm walking all day, I'm sitting down on the sidewalk, because I'm tired, like, waiting for a church service to open or something, they're acting like I'm loitering on the public sidewalk, like, "What are you doing?", like, questioning me. One day I was laying down out in Harbor Creek, because I was tired, you know, I'm a homeless person, I'm sleeping on the ground, like, nobody even, like, it's a business, it's not even a business, it's like a sidewalk, the old Kmart ain't even open anymore, I'm laying down there, some lady comes, wakes me up, and gives me some money, she says she wanted to make sure I was okay, she called the police, because she didn't know who to call. But they come, and they're like, questioning me, like, like I committed a crime or something. I'm like, and then somebody else is stopping me, I'm sitting on the, on the, you know, the curb, they're acting like, like, I'm sitting here trying to plot on somebody or something, I'm like, I'm tired, I'm homeless, I'm waiting for the church service to open. You know, I'm not even doing anything, I'm not breaking any law or anything. You'd think the police, if they see somebody, you know, sitting down somewhere and looking tired, they'd ask me if I was okay, and try to get me some help, not act like I'm a criminal. Yeah, that's all I have, thanks.
My name is Deborah Cole. I live at 1140 West 20th, and I just wanted to tell you how my day started today. I'm crossing the street at 7th and Peach, and someone comes up behind me, and they say, "Good morning." And I turn around, and I look, and I'm like, "Good morning." So, I cross the street, and I come into the building, back near the police department, and they're walking behind me, and I go in, and I pick up two newspapers, like I normally do if they're there. I come out of the police department, and they're still walking behind me, and I get to the front lobby, and I'm crossing the front lobby to come toward City Clerk's office, and I get the question, "Can I help you?" And I turn around, and I'm thinking, "Who's she talking to?" And there was a guy sitting on the couch, on the chair, so I thought she's talking to him. So, I get closer to the door, she says, "Can I help you?", and by that time, she's behind me. And I turn around, I says, "Uh, I said, 'What are you asking me?'" She says, "Can I help you?" I says, "I've been here 33 years, how long you been here?" She says, "Well, I'm on City Council." I said, "Oh." She said, "Well, I", she says, "I thought you looked like you needed some help." I said, "Look like I need some help? What do I look like? I'm well-groomed, I'm walking, I walked in the police department, they didn't have any problem with me." I come out of there, she's still behind me, and all I'm doing is walking toward a door. I'm not allowed to come in the City Council door? This is what I don't understand. Why would I be questioned? What was the reason for her even asking me? She saw me go in the police department, I pick up two newspapers to drop one off at this office, and I go on, mind my own business. And so, when I ask her, "You know, why you ask me that?", she mumbled something. I mean, the only thing I could see derogatory about myself is the color of my skin. You know, I come to work, I get to work early, I try to get to work early, at least on time, but I do try to get to work early. And I just, I just didn't appreciate what happened, and I didn't know that City Council was part of the security, because we really could use some security around here. So, you know, I'm not homeless or anything, but yeah, we could use the security, so maybe more of you should be asking, "Can I help you?" That's all I have to say.
Can I say something, Madam President?
Debbie, I just want to thank you for your service, and thank you, and that, and I apologize that that happened to you and that you feel that way, and I can, just from knowing everyone on this council, I don't think anybody's intention was to make you feel that way, and if anyone did, we apologize. They were probably just trying to be friendly, and I'm sorry that it didn't come across that way. You're a well-respected employee here, you used to work for us in the Clerk's office, and I want to thank you for your service, and I'm sorry that that happened. We'll talk afterwards, we'll talk offline. Thank you.
Are there any more citizens to be heard? Are there any more citizens to be heard? Last call for citizens to be heard. That takes us to ordinance sense for a final passage.
Council File Number 15641, official ordinance number 302018, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $24,894 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof, donation from the Erie County District Attorney Drug Account. By Mr. Winarski and seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15641, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 302018, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Ms. Demersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council pass Official File Ordinance Number 302018 finally by a 7-nay 0. Ordinances for first reading. Council File 15644, an ordinance closing and vacating approximately 100-foot-long section of unimproved alley between Chestnut Street and Myrtle Street, between West 25th Street and West 26th Street, with reservation of existing utility rights of way. By Mr. Kwiatowski, seconded by Mr. Demersky, the Council File Ordinance Number 15644, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Ms. Demersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15644 by a 7-nay 0 on first Council File 15643, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $8,000 of program income generated through the Home Program for the Home M15 projects. By Mr. Demersky, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the Council File Ordinance Number 15643, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Ms. Demersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15643 by a 7-nay 0 on first Council File 15642, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $61,894.63 of program income generated through the Home Program for the Home M14 projects. By Mr. Demersky, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the Council File Ordinance Number 15642, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Ms. Demersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15642 by a 7-nay 0 on first That'll take us into new business.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to move the balance of the agenda.
I'll second it.
Are there any separations?
Madam President? If we could separate number eight, under New Business 12. We don't have to do 12, I can talk during my comments at the end. And under Contracts Number 3, and under Purchase Orders Number 9 and 21.
Did you separate number 8, Bob?
I did, yes. Eight, the National Development Council, under New Business.
Okay, why don't we do number 9, too, Madam President, because they go together.
Okay.
I just like an explanation.
Yeah, that's why I did 8.
Madam President, I would like to separate number 1 as well.
Number 1, Kathy?
Yes. Number 1.
Number 9 and number 21, under Purchase Orders. Bob?
9 and 21, correct.
Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. By Mrs. Schaff, seconded by Ms. Allen. Resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, that the City Council of the City of Erie proclaim September 25th as voter registration day, and will be observed annually on September 25th. From this day forward, encourage citizens to register to vote regardless of their political affiliation. Discussion?
I have something to say. Thank you, Madam President. I went to the Jefferson Society a while back, and they said that they didn't have that many high school people who voted the last election, and that really saddened me, it was like, a number below 10, I think. And I know a young man, Ian Brady, who spent his summer interning for Next Gen, and he was out getting people to register to vote this summer, and he just recently went back to college. And then, if you recall, E.J. Fike came up and spoke to us a while back to get something started, and then I had seen E.J. again, and told him that I would do something, and so, we have National or Voter Registration Day, and I talked with some, Mr. Rocco, who said we could set up a table in Perry Square, that we could have both sides of, like, all the parties who want to, to help get people to register to vote, because that is important. That was also on the news yesterday. We need to get the next generation to vote. Thank you.
Roll call. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Ms. Demersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. By Mr. Demersky, seconded by Ms. Kwiatowski, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, that the mayor and other appropriate city officials are hereby authorized to execute an agreement between the City of Erie and National Development Council to provide NDC certification of specified Mill Creek and City of Erie employees for no more than $35,000. Discussion?
Madam President? Madam President? I just, you know, this came down on the agenda, and the big thing for me is, I I just, you know, this came down on the agenda, and the big thing for me is I would like to see more collaboration with council and the administration on this NDC. I know it's coming through ECR, but everything that I've read about it is just what we've read in the newspaper. We've really gotten no information at all. And so either the president or the liaison, if we could include them on those conversations, or at least in a memo, that would be appreciated. I'm going to vote for it, but I just wanted, because I know what it's about from reading about it on my own, in the newspaper and other places. But I think it's very important that as we move forward, that, you know, council wants to be a part of the exciting things that are going on, and you just need to be included. Thank you.
Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. By Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, that the mayor and other appropriate city officials are hereby authorized to execute an agreement between the City of Erie and Erie County Gaming Revenue Authority to fund the NDC certification of specified Mill Creek and City of Erie employees.
Madam President?
Yes.
I would just ask the administration if we could get a list of who those employees that are going to be certified are, and then what the role is with NDC, and the cooperative agreement with Mill Creek, how that's going to work. I'd appreciate it.
And on this item, I share the same concerns that, being on that committee, we have not been notified properly of these things as they come down. Please don't assume that we all read the newspaper, or we use social media. So please, contact either the president or the committee members, so that I don't have to do my research. I should, it should be provided. I didn't even know what this is all about until I came in this morning. Go ahead, Madam President.
Roll call. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Okay, I'm not sure if I pulled the right one out here, Bob. A purchase order for, or an agreement to Dave Ford?
Yes.
Oh, okay. By Mr. Winarsky, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to issue an agreement to Dave Ford, Inc., 1600 Golden Mile Highway, Monroeville, PA, for a 2018 Ford F-150 all-wheel-drive supercab truck, for the Department's Drug Vice Unit, for the Bureau of Police, at a total amount of $26,634.
Madam President?
Yes.
I pulled this for two things. Number one, you know, I'm all for, I support our police department first and foremost. I want everyone to know that. However, we have a million-dollar budget deficit. And just like your house, I'd love to get a new car, but I can't afford it right now. And so sometimes you have to repair the car that you have when money's tight in order to stretch your dollar and close the gap, so that you don't have a deficit at the end of the year. Just in looking at, to me, I don't think this is a necessity. I'm going to vote for it because I support the police department, but I really want this administration to take a tougher look at cutting costs, and telling the department heads what's a necessity and what's a luxury. I've just looked on here, and the things I've pulled, that's $31,000 in expenses. Multiply that over 24 meetings, that's three-quarters of a million dollars. That almost closes our hole in our deficit. It's just a little bit of belt tightening and stretching things just a little bit more that can turn the city, this deficit around. And I just pulled this to make a point that, you know, sometimes we have to do more with less. And I don't know what, and that was the second question. What's the supercab, Ford F-150 all-wheel-drive supercab truck? What's it used for?
For the drug advice unit.
Well, the drug advice unit. What do they do with it? I guess is, you know, is that, you know, these are the type of questions that I think we need. When the money's flush and we're within budget, it's not a problem. But we're not within budget. And so we have to examine every expense and scrutinize it, and make sure that we're spending the taxpayer's dollar to the most wise and prudent way possible. So that's all I have to say about this. And not that, again, it's not a knock on our police department, but it's, we have, if we're serious about tightening our belt, and that's what we're saying in the newspaper and on TV, that, oh, we're tightening our belt, we have to see it in what's coming down in the budget.
Madam President?
Yes.
One of the things I think that Councilman Mersky brought up that always bugged me, maybe Jimmy can, you know, answer this a little better than I can, but I've talked to many car dealers over the years, and they're amazed at the packages that government agencies order. They don't need to many times order the ones with the extra dressed-up packages, with the AM/FM CDs and all that. Not that that may or may not be, you know, possible to separate out, but I think all too often, in government, we sometimes order more than we need rather than the basic. I can remember my dad, being a police officer, working in a car that today you would probably laugh at. The cars were barely air-conditioned. They were very stripped down. They were basic. I'm not saying we should go back to those days, but I think when I see some of these packages we order, like, what's this one say? Supercab. Do we need a supercab? You know, you need to justify those things when the budget is as tight as we got. Do we need all the little bells and whistles that are in that thing? What are we using it for? So I think, this is not to say that it's not necessary, but I think we need to look at just what we're ordering. Are we ordering more than we need because someone wants a little bit better in there? You know, we're talking about a vehicle that's being used for work, not for pleasure. And I just want to make sure that what we buy is what we need.
Ms. Allen, Ms. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. By Mr. Winarsky, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to issue a purchase order to Printing Consom, Inc., 4982 Pacific Avenue, Erie, PA, for $20,000 parking tickets for the Office of Traffic Court at a total amount of $2,988.40. Discussion?
Madam President?
Yes.
I just had a question, because we passed an ordinance with the new parking regulations, and it went into effect July of this year. And it was supposed to go to the handheld machine, so I just want to know why we're purchasing parking tickets if we're going to the handhelds. I don't know if anyone?
I can bring it up at the next meeting and find out, but that'll be too late.
I mean, if it's for the police, I would suggest that the police go to the handhelds as well, and spend the money on the handheld devices rather than print and paper tickets, and then having two systems, one for the police and one for the parking authority. That makes no sense, and I think that's, that's not what the ordinance is.
I believe at this point, though, until the full...
Right. If it's a transition period, that's fine, yeah. But I just, again, let's make sure that we're keeping everything. It's not, it's our due diligence as a council to make sure we're taking care of these things. Plus, we passed this in an ordinance. So just to make sure that we're following our own ordinances. Thank you.
Yeah, Madam President, I think here, again, we have a lack of communication that wasn't relayed to council properly. And I'll make sure when I get to the Park Authority meeting, I have them call me and explain. Because you have a valid question, you know, it would be my que, but $20,000 doesn't seem like a lot of tickets. But still, a little communication would have helped.
Paid for those.
Yeah.
All right, roll call. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. By Ms. Allen, seconded by Mr. Winarsky, that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to issue a purchase order to Best Buy 6650 Peach Street, Erie, for three Lenovo touchscreen laptops, three wireless mice, and three laptop cases for the finance office, at a total of $2,219.91. Discussion?
Again, I just pulled this for, again, is this a necessity? I was, I worked for the government in the Erie School District, and my computer's from 2002. It still works. You know, we have to, if we're in the hole, we have to scrutinize, you know, what we're spending. And three new laptops, they might need them, but if you can make do with what you have till we get to the next budget, I think that's important to bridge that, close that gap in that budget hole.
All right, roll call. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky?
No.
Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. This resolution will adopt six to one. That'll take us to committee reports, Madam President.
We'll start with Mr. Mersky.
Thank you. Just real quick, I wanted to address the St. Vincent Agreement Resolution authorizing the Allegheny Health Network. Allegheny Health Network, under St. Vincent Hospital, is building a new cancer center. And we had a study session, or in the caucus room, they came in and told us some of the things that they're doing in that neighborhood. They're closing the alley, which we authorized today. And in exchange for that, some of the things that they're going to be doing for the neighborhood is investing $150,000 over six years into the neighborhood for community improvements near the St. Vincent Hospital campus. In addition, they're committed to hiring local. As of this date, they've already hired seven local businesses and two diverse businesses. So these are good things, and I just wanted to bring that to the community's attention. That's all I have to report today. Other than the convention center, work continues now. They're progressing, progressing, rather, on the Warner Theater project. They hired their general contractor and their architect, and they're ready to go with that. That will be continuing through the next year.
Liz?
I wanted to let council know and let the public know that we will be having a study session on Thursday, October 4th, at 5:30, to talk about the proposal from the Sewer Authority for a bond issue for capital improvements. I hope that we'll have a good session then, so that the officials from the wastewater treatment plant can explain why the capital projects are needed. But more importantly, or I guess just as importantly, letting people, citizens, know what the impact will be down the road from taking out those bond issues. I did a video conference with Catherine Jean-Rocas. I don't know if I'm saying her name correctly. She's the co-founder of CityGrows. And I was invited to that video conference, thanks to Brian Slaln of the Ben Franklin Partnership. Brian invited me to take part in the video conference after I asked a question at the Pennsylvania Governor's Asian Pacific American Affairs Meeting at Celebrate Erie. I wanted to know if there's a database of immigrant and refugee-started businesses in Erie. And that led Brian to invite me to the meeting last Thursday, where I did the video conference, I believe, on Tuesday. And there was a meeting last Thursday at the Innovation District, where I learned about the accelerator businesses in Erie. The business, the startup business people made their pitch. That's also where I met Jasmine Burns, who's in the audience. She's the first person hired, I believe, for one of the accelerator businesses, the first Erie person. CityGrows is, was co-founded by two partners, a woman who works in the Bay Area of California, and the business partner who lives in New York. It's going to be, well, it's already being rolled out, but it's a really cool concept to help cities get no-cost or low-cost access to be able to use data. And I've been talking a lot about the need for data in the city. So if you haven't had a chance to see what's going on with the accelerator businesses, you really need to make an appointment to get over to see the Innovation District, to see the startup businesses that are here in Erie. They're a block away, down the street at 717 State Street, I believe. Not all of those businesses will end up hiring Erie people, but some have, and there's also some, going to be some production of some products in Erie. So it's really exciting to find out what's happening with the startup culture in Erie. Of course, being at the Innovation District reminded me that in many ways, we are far behind the curve. And it made me think of the EMTA controversy. I have my senior citizen bus pass, but if I, and I do, I mostly ride my bike if I can when it's not 90 degrees, and when it's nice out, I try and ride my bike downtown. But if I want to take the bus, I think there was a meeting recently that I wanted to take the bus to, and I realized that there was like a one hour and 45-minute gap between when the bus would be up the block from me and when the next bus would come. So I, as, you know, we're talking about whether we read the news or don't read the news, but I certainly hope everybody knows about the controversy going on with the EMTA. There's a lot of talk about the power structure at the EMTA in Erie. I want to let you know what Columbus, Ohio is doing with its transit system. Just read this. This is a story that came out August 30th. Columbus, Ohio to build multimodal trip planning and payment system. Public transit in Columbus, Ohio will take a significant step toward digital integration with a system that merges trip planning and payment, all in one easy-to-use app. The city's Smart Columbus Initiative, in partnership with the Central Ohio Transit Authority, has released an RFP to develop a multimodal trip planning app, bringing together public transit, taxis, ride-hailing, and bike sharing. A second RFP will be released at the end of the year for the development of a payment portal that will handle payments from multiple modes of transportation under one system. Columbus is a smart city. Erie is going to become a smart city. We're on our way there. We need to be talking about innovation, new things that can be done, instead of rehashing the same old arguments about city versus county versus how you get appointments on boards and authorities. I thank Bob for bringing up the point about the budget. It is a real concern. Kathy Schaff and I are going to be attending the Cog Workshop on municipal budgeting, which is next Thursday. I also, I've been talking to, wherever I meet business leaders, I talk to them about the city budget. I think it might be really interesting to have a civic hackathon, to bring in some people to actually look at the budget, and do kind of, as Bob said, say, hey, this is where you can tighten your belt. Have you thought about doing this? Thanks.
Mail?
Thank you, Madam President. No report.
Jim?
Thank you, Madam President. Very brief, everybody is aware of the EMTA debacle. Once again, it just doesn't seem to go away if it's one thing or another, but without getting into too much until we get further explanation results on what officially went down as, let's get one thing straight, as liaison, don't look at me. Don't blame me for all this. But I have been in contact with numerous people at the, and like I said, I appreciate the mayor, the administration getting involved a little bit to just try to get this entity that the city needs. It's in a process of phase two of an $80 million project in the heart of our city that we got to get the politics aside, and let's just do our job, let the people who are put in positions do their job. We just don't need all the outside interference to plain and simply screw it up. But more to come later. Naturally, we're going to have our first finance meeting since we did get our mid-year One thing that just sticks out very hard in my mind, you know, when it comes to revenues, we know what's coming in. It's a, as a word is said historically, year after year after year, and you get some increase, some decrease. But when everything's pointed at the revenue from the Sewer Authority, from our outlying communities, how we can miscalculate by a million dollars, I need a very good explanation on that, because whether you take the weather or... good explanation on that because whether you take the weather or all the flow into consideration, maybe you're off $100,000, maybe you're off $200,000. But after years of experience and actually even years of being on this council, we don't miscalculate by $900,000 or a million dollars. But we'll follow up at our finance meeting on that. There was one citizen that was up here earlier regarding Erie Insurance and their security, Gannon and their security, and our police department. We are more than welcome as a city and thankful as a city to have these other entities be a part of our law enforcement or our security. They are a helping hand, they, they work hand in hand with our city policemen, and we take anything they have to offer to help keep our city, our downtown, safe. And by no means do I want to forget about Mercy or Stall, so they have their own security up there that they go through our city neighborhoods. So from a council standpoint, thank the other entities in this town who are part of the security of keeping our citizens and our city safe. And one other item, I just want to thank the administration. I know Celebrate Erie is past, but there's still some remnants on State Street as I drove down. But for a first endeavor on their part as a new administration, I think it went off pretty well, and thanks for a good time. Thank you.
Kathy?
I want to apologize for asking the woman who was up here earlier. I was just trying to be helpful. So I really didn't have any agenda other than trying to be helpful. So I wasn't paying attention. Just, thank you, sorry. Went to the Labor Day Parade and thank you to all the people who came out and all the people who marched in it because it was a really hot day. And we have so many wonderful services in Erie and very thankful to all the people who came and celebrated downtown. The Viaduct fundraiser, as Steve Gleason mentioned, is this weekend to support the bridge. I will buy a ticket. Unfortunately, I have two friends who have 60th birthday coming up that I've known forever, and Friday and Saturday I'm spending time with them. My husband was my plus-one at the Tuskegee Airmen Show and really enjoyed the message here that I received to pass on. Aim high, believe in yourself, use your brain, never quit, be ready to go, expect to win. They had a great movie for everybody out at the North Coast, and it was a great weekend. They brought a lot of students out and a lot of people got to see the inspirational movie, which also inspired me because I didn't know too much about them. I got into a conversation on Facebook with a person who said Erie was boring because there is so much to do. You just have to go outside your house and appreciate it, and so many fun activities, and just even the sunset alone is peaceful. So, thank you, have a great day.
Cass?
Thank you, Madam President. We attended the Airport Authority meeting recently, and we got to meet the new airport director, Mr. Derek Martin, a 20-year veteran of the Wayne County Airport in Detroit, and also he worked at the New York and New Jersey Port Authority. Good gentleman. He seems committed to increasing air traffic in Erie like we all are, and it's going to be an ongoing process. But I think his age is working in his favor that he may, may be around for a while. We've had a wrath of directors leave for whatever reasons, one through death and one just having enough. But I think Mr. Martin will hopefully advance the airport forward in our goals. And kind of piggyback into that, I had a chance to take in the Tuskegee Airmen exhibit, which I wished a lot of people in the community would have taken in. It was a fabulous history lesson, and while I was there, I had a chance to talk to the people from North Coast Air, who also are a, very involved with the airport development. But if they come back, and I'm sure they will, I would implore anybody to, to take, there's a nice 30-minute film there that'll explain to you all about the Airmen and their frustrations of trying to serve this country. We also took in the O and E Pension Meeting, and the pension is doing fine. I think it reached its high point recently and has continued to progress forward with its funding status, so we have nothing to worry about there in the immediate future. We mentioned the budget, and this is going to be a very important year for those of us on council. I think we put off a lot of things for a while, and I think that's gone now. I think when we face a shortfall as we are, I think everything needs to be looked at, everything, and I mean everything, purchases, fees, and even how we collect old fees that it was a distress to me to find out that, I had to find out the hard way, that we, we have some fees out there that are uncollected. And I think we need to start collecting those before we start looking for more revenue from our taxpayers. This council, not this council, but some members of this council and the past council took care of one hole with the garbage. And I think parking tickets will be another one we need to look at, and the BIU program and the rental program, it seems to be we have houses that still aren't registered. And we need to close all those loopholes before we start asking the public for more money. So this budget, I will be watching real careful. One complaint I had downtown was there's still too many no parking signs along State Street. If the administration can see that the old ones are at least taken down, it caused a little confusion. I watched some people on Sunday trying to figure out if they could park in front of what used to be the old DeLuca's, when, when they're confronted with two sets of signs, one for a past event and one for, I think, a future event. So if we can at least take down the old, if we're, if we're putting up new ones, we certainly could have took down the old ones. We don't need a hodgepodge of signs saying you can't park here from a date that's passed, and then you got the regular part, no parking signs to boot, so it's a little confusing. I had the time to read it, I don't know if everybody does. We still have an issue behind East 27th on St. John's, and I'm going to stay on top of that. Some of the neighbors have been calling down here and have not got return calls from certain people, which I will discuss with the administration. We at least owe them a phone call back. This is going to be a quality of life problem, and as school starts, many of these people do not have parking spaces. One woman the other day was, her car was damaged. We don't need any more of that. We don't need people looking for excuses to move outside the city. And finally, I am still waiting, and I can't remember how many weeks this was, for that report from Civic Pulse. I have not got it, I don't think any other member received it, and if this continues to be a problem, I'm going to do what I have to do to get it. But no councilperson, especially the head of that liaison department, should have to wait. The president should not have to wait, nor any member of council. So if there's a problem, I want to know what the problem is. And if they think I'm fooling around, or as the newspaper said, I'm posturing, I'm not posturing. This is for real. I am not happy. I want that report, and I want to see it. Thank you.
Thank you, Cass. I'd just like to say that I had the pleasure of attending the McCullum Park Celebration last week, the opening of their new trails out there. And I was born and raised on the east side, and that was my first time even going to that park. That's a beautiful park, what they have done to it, and they just said they got a grant, they're gonna put a playground in there, they got a spot for dogs out there too as well. So I encourage anybody on the east side to go to McCullum Park. It's a beautiful, or the west side. It's a beautiful park, and, and the highlight of it is they're finally doing some development on the east side, you know, and I hope it don't stop there because we got a lot of things that we need to have done on the east side. This is what brings us hope on the east side, small things like that. So I hope that they continue to develop the east side because we all want to live in nice neighborhoods too and have nice parks to go to as well. And then on the flip side of things, you know, it's a sad time for the Erie community. The violence have picked up again, you know, and my condolences on any family who has lost a loved one within the last few months. It's sad, you know, and, and people sit back and think it can't happen to them, but it can. You can be in the wrong place at the wrong time. And you know, after, it's been eight years since I lost my son, and every time I turn on the TV and see that people are steady losing young men, early twenties, late teens, it's sad. And we have to put unity back into word, community. We have to come together and stop what's going on because, I'm gonna tell you this, as long as we all sit in our homes and, and sit behind our closed doors, watch our TVs and say nothing and do nothing, we just as guilty as the ones out there doing these violent acts of crime. So we need to get involved in our community. Something needs to be done. You know, my heart goes out to all mothers who have lost children in this sad way, not just gun violence, drug overdosing, it all goes hand in hand. A loss is a loss, we all feel the same kind of pain, and you know, again, we need to come together as a community. And with that said, Teresa, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to briefly touch the, on the letter that I gave council members regarding the MMO for 2019. There's a letter attached that briefly explains the amount for next year and how they arrived at it, and then the attached paper has the breakdown for each one of the three plans. So if you have any questions, just feel free to contact me. That's all I have.
Okay. Renee?
Good morning. I'd like to touch on a few things that were brought up and then a few other things I wanted to mention. In terms of the NDC training, we can get you the list of the employees and also the community members that will be going through the training. This was actually something that we did talk about in Mayor's Business Council. And so basically, what, what we were able to do is we got a multi-municipal grant through ECR and the amount of $28,000. The city and Mill Creek will pay the balance. So when we say up to $35,000, the city share should really only be about $17,000 of that, but we're just trying, we want to make sure that we're covered. About 40 to 50 community leaders will get training in economic development and creative financing opportunities. And, and then there will be some employees from Mill Creek and Erie from the Planning Department and the Economic Development Departments who will get specific certified training that they will be able to attend, actually for free, as part of this agreement with the NDC. But we'll get you the full breakdown of who those members are. On the Ford F-150 that we're actually being, being reimbursed for through the county, the parking tickets are just an interim measure because what we're trying to do is get the Parking Authority, code enforcement, and the police all on the same system with the handheld devices, and we don't have those yet. So the parking tickets are just an interim measure, but we want to get the same handhelds that can also be used for code enforcement ticketing. And then for the laptops, those are for finance, payroll, and IT to replace broken laptops so that the employees have access to information when they're not at their desks. Then also, I just wanted to touch on City Grows. As Mrs. Allen mentioned, we are working with them. It's a wonderful company that was brought in by the Erie Innovation District. And not only are we working with them on the Citizen Response Center, but also on event planning and permitting. So everything that Dave Rocco does, when somebody calls and wants to have an event, will be entered into one of these digital processes online so they can see how much does it cost to reserve the bandstand, how much does it cost to have, you know, police at your event. All these things will be laid out, people will be able to select, it'll go through a ticketing process, will automatically go to Dave Rocco, and citizens will automatically get notified of the process, where, you know, how, how it's traveling through the different steps and, you know, when fees are due, all those kinds of things. So it'll be, it'll be much easier. Also, we have another naturalization ceremony coming up this Friday at 10:00 a.m. at the federal courthouse. For anybody who hasn't attended one of those, it's extremely moving experience. We usually, usually have about 50 new Americans who are being naturalized, and they usually come from 16 or 17 different countries. And they're, they're extremely happy and excited to be, becoming citizens. And I just, I want to mention too, the Hispanic Heritage Festival over the weekend, for those of you who are able to attend, I know I saw several of you there. It was, it was the biggest festival that they've ever had. It was a great celebration of community. And, you know, as I, as I look ahead to the census and 2020, it's very important for the city to take an active role in making sure that everyone is counted. We want to make sure that we're, we are counting accurately, because with the question added to the census about your, your country of origin, we're, we're concerned that a lot of people may not want to take the census. And so the city's going to take an active role in making sure that everyone is counted accurately. I also just want to mention a couple of other things. This Saturday, the Eagles Nest is having their block party from 12:00 to 7:00 at 1140 Pennsylvania Avenue. That'll be a wonderful community celebration, they've reserved the bandstand for that, and there will be a lot of things going on there. The PA Municipal Authorities Association is having their conference here in Erie at the Bayfront Convention Center. In their entire 76-year history, this is the first time they've ever come to Erie. So we want to show them what a welcoming community we are, and we're hoping that they will add Erie to their rotation. We fully expect that they will after they have a wonderful time here. And finally, I just want to, I want to thank the NCCC team that was here as a part of the Maricor Vista Program. We had seven young adults here working over the summer in the our west bayfront neighborhood and in east bayfront, beautifying lots and putting in pocket parks. And last Thursday, there was a ribbon cutting at Westerdoll Park on the corner of Fourth and Poplar. And if you haven't been over there, that corner has been completely transformed from a, a very problem area into a beautiful community park. So I just want to thank the NCCC team who's, who's done now and had their closing luncheon yesterday and on their way home. So that's all I have.
Madam President, can I just add one thing to what Renee said about City Grows? And the reason I thought about this is because I know Kaz and some, some other colleagues have frequently talked about the frustration of not knowing where there's roads closed. So one of the things the founder of City Grows told me is that it's also possible to get, to get something out there that would be on the website that would show you if, you know, a road is closed in Erie, it's also closed in Mill Creek and the surrounding townships. It's just, I mean, it might seem like a little thing, but I know it would solve some of the frustrations that not just city council, but citizens have in getting around, so.
Yeah, we're working on several different things with them, actually. They're, they have contracts in Santa Monica and Los Angeles, so because they're a pilot here with the Erie Innovation District, they're providing their services free of charge to the city, and we're kind of able to take advantage of everything that they've already done for Santa Monica and, and Los Angeles. So we're very grateful.
And Madam President, if I could just say one thing. Thank you for the explanation. In the past, council received those memos before the vote so that it was easy, that we didn't have to ask the questions. So if we could, and usually the, the department heads sent those memos to the liaison, so I, you know, there's a learning curve with the new administration. So now that we're almost a year in, if we could, you know, reinstitute those memos, I think that, that helps with the smoothness of the communication between administration and council. Thank you.
President, I just want to send a kudos out to Dave Rocco. President, I just want to send a kudos out to Dave Rocco, who has been doing Celebrate Erie and so many other events in the city for many years, and sometimes he don't get the kudos that he needs. So, thank you, Dave Rocco.
Madam President, since everybody else is getting a second committee report.
Meeting's adjourned.
I just want to specify, the, Bob brought up the F-150 that the police department is purchasing. Those are funds through the drug forfeiture account, which is received from the district attorney's office. So, it is no city finances that are paying for this F-150. So, with that being said, and I did actually talk to the chief, they are replacing numerous vehicles with this one, and to answer Kaz's question, bigger, better, they do need an extended cab to transport some of the criminals or potential criminals, so you need more seating. But with that being said, it was no city monies used in purchasing this vehicle. Thank you.
And before we close, I just want to second what Mel said about Dave Rocco. He's a great guy, and he really helps our community out when it comes to events. So, thanks again, Dave Rocco. We love you. And our city council meeting is adjourned.
City council adjourns at 10:20. Ms. Larrington, Ms. Allen, Ms. House, Ms. Murphy, Ms. Garcia.